So I said believe whichever one of the about to start up made it. Um, we can't say the mayor tonight until he gets it anyway. But anyway, we're gonna go ahead with our work session. And we'll follow them. We can't talk about usually the mayor's usually protocol, my attorney's not here yet. But anyway, look, get my department to say yes and then we'll go forward. Let's let's uh.
I don't have anything to add.
Got it.
I don't have anything.
Yes, sir. I've got three things actually tonight. We're gonna be recognizing a couple of retirees tonight in the council meeting. And also, we have the rental lease agreement for the old Station One for RPS. It's been vetted through our attorney and through RPS's attorney. So we want, we're gonna bring that tonight for the council to approve hopefully. And then we have two job descriptions that are on the agenda. One is the fire marshal job. We're just reclassifying that. That is an existing position. We're just moving that to an administrative position. The other is the training chief position, which is the new position that was approved in this year's budget. We did not have a job description for that.
Chief.
Um, we're interviewing again for police officers and for dispatchers. We've got, got openings in both as well. We've always had police officer openings. We've got a new dispatcher opening again. And I was noticing something when I was looking at staffing and we have replaced or we have hired thirty people since I got here. And thirty of our forty-eight employees have less than five years. We're dangerously young and inexperienced. Luckily, we've recently hired a couple retirees. I've got one more that we're gonna swear in probably at the next city council meeting that we hired from another agency that has experience and he's willing to work night shift, which is great. But we have good people, really, really good people. Sixty-three percent of our people have less than five years experience, which is a little frightening for me. That's not a good ratio. You know, I mean, you've seen the number of people I've sworn in since I got here. It's, it's a revolving door. And it doesn't seem to be slowing down. The turnover is, is crazy. And, and with the younger people, even though they're really good people, they're gonna make mistakes. We deal with more complaints, more issues, not from them not having a good work ethic and good morals, just from inexperience and making mistakes. And we have to deal with, deal with that. I've also got our Southern Software that we went to a couple of years ago. We've gotten some additional training. You know, we've had a pretty heavy dispatcher turnover. We're on our third dispatch supervisor and we really haven't gotten a handle on how to utilize that statistically. Actually, Kelly was asking for some information. The third year she's asked me for it and it's been a, it's been difficult to get. But I think we finally got that figured out. We actually had somebody from Southern Software come up and sit down with our dispatch supervisor and go through and show us how to do some of the statistical information about our crime statistics and different things. I think that's gonna be helpful going forward. I'm gonna publicize some of that information. You know, I'm, I'm very outspoken about what I say about what we do. I, I publicize a lot and I believe in that. I believe in being transparent. I think it's good for the city. I think a small portion of the people that read the posts that we make get the wrong impression and they think that like recently we had two search warrants for, for drug trafficking and made arrests and we recently had a seizure on, on the interstate of cocaine. Well, those are not crimes that are, are, anybody would ever know about if we didn't investigate them, get tips from the citizens and go out and make those cases. Well, in a lot of cities, you're not gonna have proactive law enforcement. Nobody's ever gonna hear about that. But I wanna make sure people understand that if somebody's dealing drugs in a neighborhood and they're doing it quietly, but they're still selling deadly poison to our kids and, and people and, or, or selling guns, that sort of thing to kids like we've been dealing with here recently, I think it's imperative for us to investigate and go after them. When we do that, we get in the news, we got a, you know, forty-gram seizure of fentanyl. We got twenty-one kilos of cocaine. We got, you know, somebody distributing guns of marijuana. People get the wrong impression that that means we have more crime here. It doesn't mean we have more crime here. It means we're going to get the criminals and hold them accountable. Well, what I wanna do with this capability of showing our statistics is there's a lot of things I wanna share with the public. Like, one thing is we've had four murders in the five years I've been here. All four were solved and all four were domestic violence related. Now, that's not a good thing. But when people compare us to other high-crime cities, when you see occasionally people say that, you know, on social media, the, the facts don't support that at all. We are going to have higher arrest statistics and crime statistics as long as we remain proactive. But in the long run, it's gonna make us all safer. I mean, you just think about since 2025 started, we have taken off the street people that were selling actively, dealing and selling dangerous drugs in our city. And that, you know, in, in my opinion, that's much more important than trying to keep quiet about it. I don't believe in keeping quiet about it. And we'll see. Not many law enforcement leaders function the way I do. I'm kinda swimming upstream, going against the grain. But I've been doing this a long time and I don't, I've seen cities, being a fed and working with a lot of cities, I've seen cities that downplay their level of crime and don't deal with it directly. And people think they're safe until it gets out of control and you start really having a problem. Well, you know, by then, maybe that chief's retired and you got another one who inherits the problem. I, I just don't believe in that. And I appreciate the support that I get from, from y'all and the support that I get, the, the police department gets from the community and from our staff. Because I think the community believes in it, most of the community does. And I think, well, I know our staff believes in it. And part of the reason why they are proactive and they go the extra mile is because we do show them support. And we do encourage that, that proactive level of work. But it is frightening to me that sixty-three percent of our folks have less than five years on the job. That's just, that's a very, very low level of experience for a, a police department to have. It's not that, that much outside the norm though. I know a lot of departments are having problems, some worse than ours, some not as bad as ours. We've currently got one young man at the police academy and we, we believe the next academy class will have another one. So we've got some, quite a few brand spanking new people that are out there. That's, that's just gonna be a, a problem that's just gonna take time to overcome. But if we keep having the turnover we're having, we're not gonna overcome it. We're just gonna have to deal with it. So if you guys are hearing from people that are, you know, I, I get more complaints sometimes. It kinda goes in cycles. But the biggest one I get is the response time complaint or us not being able to respond at all because we have to prioritize. If we've got a serious crime going on or wreck with injuries or something like that, if we were headed to that call with somebody's dog in the yard or, you know, neighbors arguing or whatever, we ain't gonna be able to get to the dog or the neighbors. That's just, just a fact. We have people waiting in our lobby forty minutes on an officer to come take a report. That's not unusual, sometimes longer than that. I try to have one of the admin staff go out and talk to them when that happens, just to let them know, I think we're not forgetting about you. And usually they're understanding. Sometimes they're not. We've had people walk out. I, I get, I hate that. I can't stand it. But it's just the reality of what we're dealing with now. City's growing way faster than the police department is. Police department's treading water. We haven't increased one single spot in the five years I've been here. We're still at the same staffing level. The case vehicle for our case program that you guys approved, we're ordering it now and hopefully it'll be built in soon. I think we're gonna be proud of it. We're gonna bring it here. It's gonna be uniquely Calera, nothing else like it. The, I think the program, case program is uniquely Calera. And I know I've told you before, there's some other school systems, police departments and school systems that are interested in copying that. And yeah, Kingdale, I know that, that you started ball rolling on that when you saw what, what Compact 2020 was doing and I appreciate that because that Compact 2020 has been very helpful along with Montevale's program and helping us get started. And then, you know, Kelly and everybody else that worked with us on using the opioid money, I think that worked out just perfect and it's going very well. I hope you hear good things about it. I'm proud of those guys, those SROs. And when I get that vehicle in, we're gonna put a slick wrap on it. It's gonna look good and we'll bring it here and let you guys see it like we did our, our new patrols pattern on our patrol vehicles. Very soon, we will have our SUVs, four of our new SUVs wrapped with that same look that you saw on the pickup truck that again was designed by our staff. They picked it, they designed it and I think it's wonderful. It helps with morale and I, I think it helps the city. The, the citizens seem to like it too and they're proud of it. I want it to be different. I want it to be uniquely Calera and I think it is. But as soon as we get one of those cars finished, we'll bring it here for you to see as well. That's all I've got.
Chief, let me ask you something.
Yes, sir.
Last week I was out in Montgomery and the legislature had, had did this bill. Are you familiar with some of the details about it as far as, I'm not sure which bill, the number of the bills they did, like six hundred and so on. But it's, it's pertaining to the police officers that are hired and their kids can go to college and some more. Can you kind of bring us up to date and how would that help you?
Well, there's, there's a, it's pretty broad. There, there's a whole package of things that Governor Ivey spoke about and part of it is educational funds for, for the children of officers. Another big part of it is qualified immunity. You know, a lot of states have removed qualified immunity from law enforcement officers. The states that have done that are having a enormous crisis in hiring people there. Many of those states are lowering their standards. And qualified immunity, I know you're probably somewhat familiar with it, but if an officer is acting within the scope of their authority, they're not violating their policy, they're not violating the Constitution of the U.S. and they're not violating anybody's civil rights. If something goes wrong, it protects the officer from being sued. It's an important protection because when you go to domestic violence situations, when you pull a car over with tinted windows in the middle of the night, bad things happen. I mean, a lot of times if the officer makes the right decision, it's still gonna be bad because of decisions that's criminal makes. Well, qualified immunity, it's always existed and honestly, without it, I can't imagine getting people to do this job. And again, it does not protect an officer who violates their policy, who violates the Constitution of the U.S., who violates somebody's civil rights. It does not protect them. But an important part of this new bill would allow a judge to throw a case out after a motion is made based on qualified immunity. Some of these lawsuits that I know I've been involved in and anybody's been in law enforcement very long, some of these lawsuits go on for years and years and the facts don't really change. They just get kicked down the road again, again, again. It's an enormous expense and enormous distraction and, and it can be a morale killer for a department. Well, a summary judgment can now be issued based on a motion and qualified immunity can be granted and the case can be done away with by the judge. And I think speeding that process up now, that doesn't mean that you don't have to prove that the officer did nothing that violates any of those things I spoke of earlier. You still have to be within, you know, you guys are approving our policies. If an officer violates our policy willfully, knowingly, they're not protected. So that's why those policies are so important and that's why we have this company that we contract with and every officer gets those policies. I get notified when they read them. They have to read them. We get a notification back electronically. We have updates to the law that goes to them and I'm grateful that, that you guys allowed us to undertake that and get us in the 21st century because we were in the 1970s with our policies. And that liability wise for the city, I think that was an enormously positive move. But I don't know if that answers your question. There's a lot more aspects to those bills. There's a, the Glock switch aspect of it and a lot of that stuff's controversial. It'll be interesting, interesting to see how it goes.
That's the main, the most important part of from what I have to say and I think that's what I'm.
Yeah, yeah, it's pretty broad and it's, and some of it, like I said, some of it's controversial. Well, the qualified immunity is controversial because this expands qualified immunity. It already exists, it already exists here in Alabama. But I think the, the thing that law enforcement officers like is, is you have the possibility of ending it quicker. That's, that's the key. Because like I said, I've, I've been involved with some that went on four or five years.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Kevin.
I don't have anything, sir.
You don't?
Yeah, yeah, I've got a, should have an agreement on there for the lease on the garbage truck for clarification. That is not one recently ordered. That's the one that was ordered about a year and a half ago that we just got. So that's the process, the lease paperwork on that. Follow up on two things. One, I still don't have an answer on sixteen thirty-one. Met with him twice last week. Actually, he was here Wednesday or Thursday. And he went out and looked at it and he said, I'll get you an answer. So don't have that answer yet. And also, the ATRIP grant that we have on twenty-five sixty-five, we did not receive the supplement, supplemental funding for that grant. So I, they were kinda, the region folks were kinda shocked that we were not awarded. So they're kinda checking into that and finding out what happened. And I'm working with them to see how we move forward with any of that. But we didn't, we did not get awarded a supplemental on that grant. That's all I've got.
Okay. Reggie.
I don't have anything, sir.
James, do you have some voice?
Just about available on the Cisco camera. That is up and functional now and the fire departments can see it on our iPads as well as in the sessions. And we also have police vehicles and dispatches up to it as well. So all our pressure partners have the ability to see four of our rural crossings, which is Highway twenty-two and then twenty-five, Seventeenth Avenue and Twentieth Avenue. And then we also, on my leader app that we have, we actually have live feeds for the citizens too, so they can actually get that and see the same thing that our officer be glued.
Okay. Maggie James.
Can I, can I add one, one thing to that? You know, that's a great benefit for us and we appreciate, you know, IT, James, they, they've done a lot of work to get that in order. And also Cisco, as you said, they, they gave us a spot to put a camera and he did a great interview today with Channel Forty-two and Fox Six, so y'all check it out.
That was also good. And I apologize for stepping in a few moments later, but I just wanna let you know that last week we met with CSX to try to combat some of these issues with a drainage contract that we've been doing, but also to look forward to some of the next phases of, you know, some of our partners and things that we're gonna have to do with CSX. And I think it was a very beneficial and we hope to build on that and get CSX at the table across from us so that we're, we can all talk and instead of having a conversation with CSX and having a conversation with these folks separately, trying to get more people at the same table and, and try to avoid some of the glitches that we run into CSX in the past. Councilmember Cost was there as well. So just wanna report that, that's, I believe that's gonna be productive especially going forward and working through some of these things with CSX.
So you're. Everybody? Okay. We got a report from the council, this morning. Okay?
My question's Bill or for you? I just have a couple of questions. Will give us an update on the restroom signage for the Manchester Street Courtyard?
Yeah, they put some, they put some up and we ordered some. Uh, I don't think they, I don't think we cared. They, they weren't quite what we thought they were, so I think he was gonna get them modified. But we did put some up on that side to make it a little bit more visible. But we have some bigger ones coming.
Okay, yes, I'm gonna order that. Sounds great. When do you expect they'll be coming in?
The signs?
Uh-huh.
Well, like I said, they came in, but we wouldn't, they weren't quite as.
You're saying that?
Yeah, yeah, we're going, so probably a few more weeks to see if we can make something a little bit bigger.
Also, you said that you met with Alda and they will get back with you. Did they give you a timeline?
He did not.
Who was it that you met with?
Uh, Mr. Leonard, the recent engineer.
The dogs? Okay, all right. You might have to.
I do, I do. And I hit him up twice. They were actually here Wednesday or Thursday for a pre-con meeting. And I hit him up in here and then before he left. I promise I'll get you an answer, so.
All right, well, maybe next week you'll have something from him. Okay, also, a representative from the railroad was here last year to give us information on, on that. So do you have a status update on right-of-way easement from the railroad adjacent to the courtyard?
I think that's what Brian had touched on just, just previously.
Yes, ma'am. We met last week. More, more to talk about the drainage agreement that we are trying to put behind us, but we believe that, we're just trying to hammer that out so we don't have to bring on the new insurance or it's not as much as new insurance. But during that meeting, we were looking forward as well, looking forward to the next phase as far as what it's gonna take in order to get sidewalk built, et cetera. So we, we, we've had those discussions, but I have not seen anything yet as far as the actual lease agreement, I think, that, that is being formulated. But I was told that it's on its way and I should be able to review it pretty soon. So that, that is moving along well. And in fact, I have a meeting, a follow-up meeting with CSX on Wednesday on some items and I'll definitely touch base with them when I talk to them on Wednesday as well.
So you'll have information on that?
I believe so.
For the next meeting possibly?
Oh, absolutely.
All right, well, that's all I have.
Okay. Debbie?
How's the fire station chief?
We will probably start moving in over the next couple of weeks. They're, they're doing the clean, the final cleanup on the inside. We've got a, radio systems being installed. We've got a few more pieces of equipment that we have to install. And I believe they're gonna pour the back driveway and the pad coming in next Tuesday. We're gonna try to do it this week, but I think it's a little bit too cold and it's still wet out there. So hopefully every, in the next couple of weeks, we'll, we'll take possession and we'll start the process of moving in.
Perfect. Now, I was out farther this past Friday and I was a little bit concerned with all the water that's gathering in the front and it looks like you guys are pumping water out. Is that gonna be an ongoing issue that we have?
Well, there's still, there's still some grade work and some landscaping that have to be done as well. You talking about in, in the front of the bay area?
Yeah, front of the bay area.
Yeah, all that area will be, that hasn't been backfilled yet, all the way to grade.
I get a little nervous when I see all that water. So Allison, we had a significant amount of rain. How's the new roof holding up?
The new roof's holding up and the same, and I am not in construction, but where the air conditioner's set and the same there, if we get a tremendous amount at any one time, the gutters are overwhelmed and it can be an issue. But I didn't see any new water issue.
Okay, no water on the inside?
I, I went in on Sunday and checked the library and I didn't see any new issues, but I have sent Robert an email just for them to come out and double check and make sure everything looked good up on the roof.
Okay, so did we have any buildings, any floodings or leaks this past week with all this rain?
Our CID building leaked and Robert's been up there and got pictures of the roof and he's had the roofer come out. We already had buckets catching water from the ceiling anyway in our evidence, but we did get some evidence wet, which is concerning.
So he's, he's got somebody come out to look at it to replace the roof or patch it?
I don't know exactly what it's gonna need. He sent pictures and for me to look at, I don't know nothing about roofs. It's another roof. And he was telling me it was similar to the Station Three situation they had there. I don't know what the remedy's gonna be yet. I haven't heard from him. But it's, it's a concern. But, but like I said, for years, we've had buckets up there catching water anyway.
That's, to me, that's not acceptable for a city. So that is something this council needs to think about, whether we need a new roof to, to solve the issue immediately or something more advanced other than where the new building down the road. But right now, I personally don't wanna see anything getting wet that, that belongs to the city. How about the Public Works Building? Have you had any issues leaking, Evan?
No.
Anything leaking in your area, Reggie?
Oh, inspections building?
Yes.
Uh, actually not. It's been a while.
Public Works, no, just right now, right now we just have the police department leaking?
The CID building.
The CID building.
We haven't had a leak at the main building in a while. We had, had some leak problems and I think they've got that shorted up.
Okay, so will you be able to give us an update from Robert at the next council meeting so we can make a decision if we need to move with something else?
Yeah, I, I, we were expecting to hear something today and, and I don't know for sure, but I don't think they got the estimate today. I, I don't think the roofer showed up.
Okay.
But Robert's been, he's been on top of it. He, he's, he's communicated with me every day, so he's working on it.
Okay, thank you. Bill, hat grant.
Mm-hmm.
We get that stuff ready to go? It has to be submitted by March the fifteenth, are we ready?
Already been submitted.
Perfect, is what I like to hear. And I wanna say, I'm extremely proud of the new garbage truck. Is it working out well?
They all have hiccups when they come in, but we're working through them.
Okay. And also, council, you notice our laser magazines are at E. Baker Station. This is a visitor's guide that is published by the Chevy County Reporter and it's taken all across the state into the welcome centers. And I noticed that Calera really doesn't have anything. We have some small things featured in there, but I feel like we have a very nice park. And I'd personally like to see if we could get a quote to ad, to advertise our park and maybe some of our amenities that we have in the city. Is that something we can do upon?
Yes.
So what do I need to do for that?
Get a quote, get it back and do a budget adjustment. We just have to sit with our deadlines on.
Okay, all right. How do y'all feel about promoting the city in this time of year?
Mark is always good.
Okay. That's all I have.
Kevin? Bill, can you give us an update on the, the bridge that's gonna go to the railroad track? What we standing on here?
So we're in, you're still in pre-award status. So they're, at the federal level, they're reviewing it with their subject matter experts. I don't know how many they'll be. We've made it through one round, they come back with questions, we answer their questions, send them back. I don't know how many rounds of that we'll have. And then they've, the preliminary horizontal vertical layouts have been approved by Alda. Don't expect a whole lot of conversation or feedback from CSX. It's, it's a pretty good span. I don't, we don't expect, it does have to go to them, but we don't expect a whole lot of comment from them, if any comment at all really, they may just. And they are starting, I think they were in town last week doing some preliminary environmental assessments. So they're starting environmental assessments now and then they'll make those findings to, they'll kinda put a report together on any restrictions that, that, that we would have, you know, maybe can only, there may be restrictions on times you can work, what you can do depending on, because I think, you know, it's already identified, which every place in central Alabama, you have the bat thing, so that puts on some limitations. So we're kind of, the hope is, is that we can get, you know, full award maybe in the second half of this year. And then that would allow part of the right-of-way acquisition and some of that to go forward and actually get started on full design.
What about eighty-six, two twenty-eight? Can you get this State Department push in a little bit on, on the road with that thing? It's, it's pedal.
Is that twenty-five?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I didn't see him Wednesday, but he was here. I need to get with him. That was actually in their budget last year to revive and it got, they moved it to two eighty. They resurfaced two eighty.
Let our roads go back.
It's pretty, it's, it is bad. He was hoping last year to try to pull a crew out of Alex City. It's pretty, it's, it is bad. He was hoping last year to try to pull a crew out of Alex City, their own crew to come over here and try to resurface it. But I, I'll let them up and see if there's any relief they can give us, because I don't think, I don't think it's in this year's budget for resurfacing. I think the best hope is next year it'd be in their budget for resurfacing.
I don't know that we can go that far. We're going to be on dirt.
It's, it's pretty bad. It is bad.
Well, wait, what, you said that it was in last year's budget?
Mm-hmm.
So, do they not roll over or what? They already had budgets?
They took the money and resurfaced two-eighty. Two-eighty got the money. What I was told. So, I'll see if he can get us a little relief, even, you know, if they have to do it in-house or whatever. He'd, he'd mentioned that, um, when we'd met last fall, I believe, when we met with him. He maybe tried to pull a crew out of Alex City.
Will you be able to hopefully talk to him between now and the next council meeting?
I will try. They're sometimes hard to get hold of.
I understand.
Well, speaking of the road, not trying to interrupt, but someone at KIV, um, announced that forty million was being appropriated for, uh, award to cities and councils and counties for various road and bridge projects. So, do you know how much is going to be earmarked for Clear?
I don't know if that, is that part of Rebuild Alabama? What is that part of? There's several, there's a couple of programs. I mean, we do get money. We do get, you know, gas tax money.
At the end of last month, um, she announced that. It was, I don't remember what particular, um, fund it was, she, she was just appropriating the money.
We do get gas tax money. We, we've utilized some of that, the resurfacing that we've ju, y'all just approved as, as part of that. And then also, we have, we have applied, um, for the, uh, a grant with Rebuild Alabama to redo Whipper Wheel. So, anything that's out there, we, Kara is really good about, you know, pushing me along to get what she needs to make the applications for any money we've got.
So, yeah, I was just wondering, you're talking about twenty-five. Maybe that could be used on that area.
Yeah, I can ask them, but, you know, like I said, they, when we talked in the fall, they didn't have it in this year's money to do, but they make you pull some out of maintenance to try to help it out.
This was like, like I said, like around the end of the month of January, she announced that.
It's where you're about to find.
Yeah, so that's, that's going to be grants. That's going to be, like I said, we're, we, we are, we've already applied for that, I believe. I believe she took. Because we applied last year and she reapplied for us this year.
Yeah, the only thing I have is to ask the council about is, I think once before, kind of mentioned this about a, a dog park within the city. I've noticed that and I've talked to several people that had their dogs down at the pavilion. So, you know, with the dogs playing and running around there, so, downtown. So, I'm bringing it back to the council attention, uh, again. Is there a way that we can look into somewhere? Because from my understanding, there's not anywhere in the city for a dog park, I mean, that we have a dog park. What must we do to look into that, to get that here?
I know at one time it was talking about putting a dog park at Choverford Park. And I didn't know it's in the plans for a small area at, uh, at the bank street there once, once, uh, we get into the second, second phase. But there was a talk back last year about putting one in at Choverford Park.
Okay. Um, so, we need to follow up on that and, but, I mean, do we need to put that on the agenda, um, come for next month? Or what do we need to do to follow up on this kind of?
Are you ready to fund that dog park?
Well, that's what we, we'll look at Kelly and see where we have funds to fund, unlike with everything else.
That to me sounds like something to be in next year's budget. It would have been discussed during the budget, budgeting period, next year's budget. If any council can make a budget adjustment. Well, I'll be bringing, um, budget adjustments to you. How about the next meeting?
The next meeting? Okay. Alright, that's all I have.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask you, dinner, are you happy with the, the lease agreement with RPS at Station One?
Yes, sir. Um, it, it seems to be appropriate. Attorney can speak to that, but, you know, and the mayor's had some dialogue with, with us in the process, but I think it's a fair agreement and, um, you know, it'll be, I think it'll be very good to bring another business to Clear. But then on the public safety side, you know, that's going to be nothing but a good thing for us to have more ambulances in town as well. They won't, they'll, you know, they'll be working out of Clear, you know, all over central Alabama, but this will still be their hub. I'll let the attorney speak to it.
Yeah, and I'm just going to point out that one of the terms to it was that they were going to maintain it themselves. So, there's a lot of things that would normally, in a normal lease, you know, you'd expect where, you know, you're the tenant with the high more, but they were being, uh, they're taking, they're, they're shouldering a, a lot more of maintenance and upkeep. So, I, we do think that it is a, a good agreement.
Sorry. Okay. Now, all of that, that, uh, prior, I know the council, you get, they'll keep it a minute and move forward, sign the agreement, have that taken place yet? That first, there was two-part agreement, right?
Yes, we, the agreement that we signed for contracting of the ambulance, that was signed the next day and it will go into effect March the first.
March the first.
Yes.
And as far as the other agreement, I, I, I was, I slowed everything down and was ready to roll, but, uh, I got it back unfortunately, uh, to the chief a little late. So, we had to have RPS take a look at it, but that's on the agenda for tonight, if I'm understanding.
Yep. And then that, and the start date for that lease will be based on when we vacate Station One and we're ready to turn it over.
To be determined once, once they're down.
There we cover everybody. Um, I might go back, back to one thing, Chief, I just, you were saying concerning the, the five-year scenario that you're dealing with. And you're saying it's compatible to, what are you speaking of? Uh, you said some other cities have a site name. You're talking about municipalities that's in Shelby County or you speaking outside of?
Everywhere. It, it, it varies in severity though, and, I mean, you've seen all the sound departments in the last few years that have come up with all these incentives to try to attract and keep people. It's been a battle back and forth. Uh, and, and recruiting is just, is vicious with, uh, people in law enforcement. But we are not in as bad a shape as, you know, I was talking about qualified immunity other, earlier. States that have removed that or limited qualified immunity and done different things, uh, and, and states that don't let their police officers police or, or municipalities that don't let their police officers police are really suffering. And then you see, you know, the incident that happened in Memphis, many people believe that that was, uh, a result of lowering your standards. And I've, I've said here a number of times, I would rather be short of people than lower our standards. I don't believe in that. And, uh, we're, you know, I don't intend to do that. I mean, that, hopefully, it never gets to the, to the point where we have to limit services. It hasn't gotten to that point. I, I don't think it will. But, um, it's something we have to think about and be proactive about because, uh, the competition for getting qualified people is very difficult. And I don't want to settle for the fourth or fifth most qualified person for our department. I think we do exceptional work here and I think we have a very high standard for our people and I'm proud of what we do. And I want to keep the best, best people here. But, you know, when you get the really, really young ones, you know, sixty-three percent of our department is five years or less. It just takes time. It takes time to, to get, uh, you know, experience and growing pains, I guess. Not really growing pains, but, uh, just pains from the, the society and the culture is... Not as many kids are interested in law enforcement as they used to be either. It's, it's not the same profession it used to be in, in the eyes of a lot of the kids. When we go and recruit at college campuses, we don't get a lot of people lined up to come talk to us like some of the other recruiters do. We often get very few. I did a recruiting, we did a recruiting up at Jeff State. We talked to four or five kids. And there's a lot of kids that go to Jeff State. I imagine the fire department would have, have better luck with that than we would. It's, it's something we got to turn around and I, and I think being transparent helps with that too. I think you, you, when you communicate what you do to citizens and give them feedback, I think that builds trust, but it's a slow process.
Does that turnover affect, and just curious, I'm looking at Kelly's, uh, your, your budgets that you sent to us. And I just look, I, I pop into that percentage of, of usage. I'm always paying attention to, and I know to you, and you're like, if that's, I think you're probably about, up to about forty percent this year already. Little bit, maybe just a little bit more than, say, most of other departments, probably, probably besides maybe IT. But, uh, the turnover is what makes that happen?
Yeah, buying new equipment, uniforms, and the training costs are substantial and, uh, yeah, I think we're probably going to go over in our training budget this year because we're sending so many to the academy. Uh, but we really prefer to hire experienced people with time on the job, but it's difficult. And we have, we have found some, but, uh, we have also had to resort to hiring new people that we have to train from scratch. But even when we bring on the experienced people, we have to equip, equip them and outfit them, and that is very costly.
And Kelly, I'm asking, I know it's, we're almost on, I think, on the way to February and I, but mostly to have a, uh, a little order, but the profit is already is.
Yes, it is.
I think it's showing about eight, eight to nine percent. Would you say that I?
Yes, definitely. Yeah, it, it's trending along nicely. The great thing about property tax is in July every year, we receive an estimate of what we're supposed to receive. So, I always budget to be what they're expecting us to receive, and it's usually pretty close to it. So, it was a nice increase this year, which was reflected in the budget, which got spent, you know, in, in the, in expenses and things, your projects you approved. So, yes, they did stay right on track. But it was a nice increase from previous year.
Do you have a, do you have a, or just map, map that more, right?
It's not, it's not a significant amount like the property.
Yes, I understand.
But sales tax is, we were up a little bit for December compared to December last year, but for what we received for November sales tax, it came in December, there was a two-hundred-and-thirty-two dollar difference in the sales tax this year to last year, which is very concerning because our personnel expenses and operating expenses increase about eight percent a year. So, you know, over the last few years, we've had phenomenal growth. And so, the growth in payroll and operating is usually absorbed by the growth in sales tax. So, seeing such a flat sales tax number is definitely concerning.
Sure, we're not eating much.
Two-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars. That's crazy.
Thank you, the man, as we, I think, we don't have, I don't know, I don't know, I'll do, so, thank you, just, can you see?
Bruce, can you get some of your speed?
Yeah, the mayor may pop at any time. I know he says he's going to try to get here if he could, I would understand. But now we will, we'll move right on with the meeting at six thirty. Okay, six thirty-one, okay, but so I'll be, and I'll, I'll actually do, good night.
Sure.
That's right. Father God will come before you and just thank you for what you do for us each and every day. Thank you for watching over, protecting us and our citizens and employees. We ask that you be with us, uh, as we move through this meeting to make good decisions on behalf of everyone, Father. Um, we, uh, again, appreciate everything you do for us. Help us to acknowledge that in our head and all. And Jesus, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We're going to start and follow the, uh, agenda as close as we can. We're going to start out, first of all, by, uh, approving this, the minutes for this, uh, this, uh, agenda for this meeting. Make a motion that we accept the minutes outside.
Are we calling them the agenda or the minutes?
Just approve the agenda.
I make a motion with, for the agenda as is?
Okay. Good motion, the second will approve that. Let's move to our minutes. I have motion to approve the minutes of last meeting, February third. I'll move.
I'll say.
Okay. Motion, second, I'll accept it. Minutes from February third, I'll get a sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. N and A's. Okay, we put on minutes as written. And I will move on to our... I would leave as event, event hour work session, and we'll move down to our first resolution. That's Resolution Twenty-Twenty-Five, that's the RDS rental lease agreement. And I know there's, and the works that are a little bit from the chief and from the attorney concerning our, concerning this, our, uh, rental lease agreement. Do we have any, uh, any comments from the council on that? Is everybody good with the agreement? Any voices from the attorney? If not, do I have a motion that we accept this, that resolution?
I make a motion.
Second? I second. Okay. All in the favor, not signed by aye?
Aye.
N and A. Okay, Resolution Twenty-Twenty-Five, ten is passed. And then next, we'll be, the recognition of, uh, David Brazier.
What up, David? This is not something that we do very often in the fire department. It's only happened just a few times since I've been here. But we're coming into the season where that first group of higher eases is starting to retire out. And so, we want to recognize a couple of them tonight. And, um, you know, doing a, a career in this business and making it successfully to retirement, you know, the physical demands and the mental demands that it takes on your body and your mind, this is a great feat.
the physical demands and the mental demands that it takes on your body and your mind, this is a great feat. So David is our first one that we're gonna recognize. David Brazier, he's, he is retiring as battalion chief here. He started here in two thousand and two, and um, he's had a lot of roles in the department, he's done our training. He was a shift captain for a long time, uh, retiring out as battalion chief, which is the shift commander. Um, he's, he's the hazmat guru for the state of Alabama, um, and that's what he's doing now, I believe, for the Alabama Fire College. He teaches all over the country and all over the world, so just about anybody in Alabama, or probably all over the southeast, it's hazmat tech or mental and physical command class probably have David, or some of our other guys that are here also teaching the program as well. So a great resource, and we hate to lose you, but we're proud that you've made it. And um, David and I go way back, um, probably back to the early nineties when I guess you were a volunteer at Henson? And I was driving on the ambulance over at Cobb Valley Fire Department, we were transport, and um, so we've known each other a long time. Kinda going full circle and ended up here at Calera together, so congratulations.
Thank you.
This is your last chance.
I, I do wanna thank the city for the, for the years of service I've been here, the city's always been good to me. And I thank Chief Kendrick for his leadership with fire department, so thank you guys.
Come on, Phillip. Our next retiree is Phillip Porter, he's retiring as a lieutenant. He started here in nineteen ninety-nine, I believe, full-time. Phillip was one of the first full-time firefighters hired here in the city. Um, he's retiring out as a lieutenant, um, he's done a fantastic job here. Um, he, leaving now, he's running the heavy equipment training course for Jefferson State, so he's, if you got any guys that need to go take a class, he's the guy teaching it right now. But um, Phillip and I go way back as well, back to, we went to recruit school together back in nineteen ninety-six at Hoover Fire Department. And then he ended up here, then I ended up here a few years later. So it's been great, you know, finishing out his career and probably finishing my career out here together, so. Just, I really enjoyed working with Phillip a lot, he was a lot of fun to work with, so congratulations. Uh, as David said, we are thankful for what you've done, for bringing us where we were and where we are now, and still working with the fire department. Appreciate y'all working with us. One time for these pictures. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Let me just say this before I sit down, because I don't speak much here, but you know, twenty-five years is not a long time to have a full-time fire department. So we still have, you know, some of the generation number one, there's a couple of guys in the back, that started here as volunteers when this was an all-volunteer department, and to go from that to, under the leadership of Chief Moon, to a paid department with three stations and you know, we're running nearly four thousand calls a year now, so we've come a long way in a short time. We appreciate the support of the city and the council, because I know we're an expensive operation to run, so thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Once again, thank you, thank those who have served in Calera for those years and kept our citizens as safe as, as it has been. So we really, really appreciate it and thankful to them. And now we'll have Chief Mike come forward and move this over again.
I'm gonna stand on this side. Let's try to see how that works out. I always stand on this side. Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. Lord my honor.
Oh, my honor.
I will never betray my badge.
I will never betray my badge.
My integrity.
My integrity.
My character.
My character.
Or the public trust.
What, the public trust?
I will always have the courage.
I will always have the courage.
To hold myself and others.
To hold myself and others.
Accountable for our actions.
Accountable for our actions.
I will always uphold the Constitution.
I will always uphold the Constitution.
My community.
My community.
And the agency I serve.
And the agency I serve.
So help me God.
So help me God.
And I always read about the verse that I think is, is uh, near to most law enforcement officers, especially, I mean, in the five years I've been here, I believe that every year, the number of officers killed in line of duty has gone up, and I, I know that this year, the rate's ahead of what the rate was last year. And it's a sad state, and when that continues to happen. But I like to read John fifteen, twelve or thirteen, "This is my command, love one another as I have loved you. No one has greater love than this to lay down his life for his friends." Congratulations, Chris.
Thank you.
And you'd think after doing this thirty times, like I said earlier, that I would, I'd get it down, but Chris comes to us from Jimson. And I remember when we interviewed him and offered him the job, his chief called and cussed me out, and uh, so it drives slow through Jimson, I don't think they'll cut any Calera folks a break now for a little while, but uh, they had nothing but great things to say about him, and you know, we've had people go to other agencies too, and they're, where they're really good people and they're making a move to help themselves and their family, we don't, and, and his chief was not like that at all, he's a great guy. But I wanted, it's interesting, I got a call today from a citizen, and Chris may have, may have set this up, I don't know if he did, he's clever. But a lady called and said, hey, I wanted to, to talk to you, chief, about one of your officers. Um, and I didn't know who she was talking about at first, and it, it, my first thought, our, thought is, here comes another complaint. And it wasn't a complaint, the lady was in a domestic situation, I, I don't even know when it happened, it was recently. And she remembered Chris's name, she said an officer, Chris Jones, was there, and we had special needs member of the family. There had been a violent act between two people, and she said that he was absolutely phenomenal. Not only did he diffuse a situation and resolve a conflict, but he went one step further, he made the, the autistic person feel better. And he, he just made the family feel safe, and also he really showed that he cared, and that's one thing we want. And I told Chris this when I interviewed him, we want people that are gonna be proactive law enforcement officers. We don't apologize for enforcing law, but we do it with professionalism, because I think you have to be both. You have to treat people right, you have to help an old lady change a tire, you have to help a family in need like that. You have to go and catch the bad guy and hold him accountable too. It has to be both. To be successful at being proactive, you have to also be service-oriented, and Chris is definitely that. Welcome aboard, Chris.
Thank you.
And then he's got a three-minute speech, I told him, is that okay?
Thank you, Chief. I guess Chris will, will it deserve a protective immunity? Okay, the Resolution twenty-twenty-five-eleven, you're gonna be unanimous consent on that one? And that's the adoption of our police policy.
I'm gonna agree unanimous consent on twenty-twenty-five dash eleven.
I'll say. Motion second. I hear a sign of aye with it.
Aye.
Aye. I hear the negative. Negative.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I, I, when you have a motion to, uh, for consent, in unanimous consent, it's best to do a voice vote, just to confirm and apologize.
Okay.
For, for ready.
Okay, woo, thank you. I'm gonna try to, let's do a real poll, I'm gonna, I'm unanimous consent on twenty-twenty-five-eleven. Um, yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Now, we move forward with, with the motion to approve the, that, that policy.
I move to approve it.
I'll say. Motion second, that we approve twenty-twenty-five-eleven. I'll agree with a sign of aye?
Aye.
N and A. And motion carried. Okay, same for the Resolution twenty-twenty-five-twelve. Unanimous can, unanimous consent, we'll do a real poll on that as well.
Could we get, um, that's yours, correct, that, did you say you did or did not have a job description for this?
So the fire marshal's position, that is not a new position, that's an existing position. We're just moving, we're just changing the job description a little bit, we're moving that from a shift base to a administrative position, but other, other than that, there's no change. The training chief's position is a new position that was approved in this year's budget, that did not exist, so that one is new, that's correct.
Okay, but you do have, we do have a job description.
Yes, that's, that's what we're adopting tonight, that's correct.
Okay, I, alright, that's fine.
Yep.
Okay. Again, I'm sure we all understand that now, uh, we, I saw, we saw it too before, uh, one of them, they said, we, we saw it too. We knew about the one that was in the budget.
Yes, sir.
But then, for clarity, we understand that it's, it's just, it's just a description, uh, a job description for that one.
That's correct, it's two job descriptions, but it's only one new job. The fire marshal's job is an existing job, we're just changing the description, that's correct.
And of course, the, the chief from the council before we vote on this. Okay, now I have a, a motion for unanimous consent.
I move unanimous consent.
I'll say.
Okay, we'll do, roll our vote and start with Allen again.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes, okay. And I would, ready to vote on Resolution twenty-twenty-five-twelve. I have a motion that we approve this, no, no justification.
I have a motion.
I'll say. Okay, motion second, that we approve the twenty-twenty-five-twelve, all in favor of the sign of aye?
Aye.
N and A. Motion carried. Okay, do we have any, one from the back, I need that, anything brought to us from the audience?
Three thirty.
Oh, that's right, we got this one of the resolution, I don't, I don't have that on.
Sorry, we have that.
Yeah, that's, that's, okay, Resolution twenty-twenty-five-thirteen, that's concerning that lease agreement. In our council package today, I don't know if that right? Do we have any questions? Did I, did I take them, talked a little bit about that, and I have any questions or comments need to make to Bill, concerning that agreement? Okay, do I hear a motion that we approved on twenty-twenty-five-thirteen?
I make a motion.
I'll say.
Okay, motion second, that we approve this agreement, lease agreement, all in favor by the sign of aye?
Aye.
All opposed is? Motion carried. Okay, we vote a comment. Can they come forward, please?
Yes, I wanna, uh, talk to the council and thank you for getting on top of the, uh, the damage to the firehouse at, uh, George Floyd Parkway, uh, y'all were quick to get on it, thank you very much. Also for fixing the, uh, the guard rail that was across the street that was hit, everything I saw pass by this evening, and it was fixed also. So I just wanna thank you, congratulations to the police chief on this new officer, Mr. Jones. Uh, I watch, uh, some YouTube on, on, uh, police reputation and stuff like that, and he's definitely an asset, and so, thank you.
Appreciate that, Miss, continue. This will happen, you can all make a motion to it, Jerry.